Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission. I would like to first call on Mr. Turner to provide information about how the public can communicate in on tonight's call.
Yes, thank you Chair Dorn regarding the procedures for communicating tonight. The commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. If you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad and that will notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we will make sure that each person gets a chance to speak. And that I will hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. So I will call the roll, make sure we're here. Commissioner Barnes. Not present Commissioner DeCarty.
Here, good evening.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Riggs.
I am here.
Mr. Tate.
Present.
And myself Chair Dorn. So we have six members with Commissioner Barnes absent for the moment. We do have a quorum, we're going to proceed. First item on the agenda is reports and announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have anything to impart?
Good evening Chair Dorn and Commissioners. I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you have any questions from Ms. Sandmeyer? Seeing none, I'm going to move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. And therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items, issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. I'd like to remind members of the public, we will have public comment later for each item that is on the agenda. This is for items not on the agenda. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised at the moment. Just as a reminder, if you do have, if you do wish to give public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window. Or if you're calling in star nine, let us know you have a comment.
Still no hands raised. We have a hand raised from the commission. Commissioner Tate.
Oh, yes, I just happened to notice that Commissioner Barnes is stuck in the attendees area. So I think he needs to get promoted. He probably had trouble with his Zoom update like the rest of us.
I certainly sympathize with that. Thank you for putting that out. I'm going to leave public comment open for a minute while staff tries to get Commissioner Barnes onto the panel. There he is.
It's a, it's a lot like getting noticed in the VIP line. Like you're like one of the people and someone, the bouncer picks you out of the crowd and says, you, you're in. Thank you for that Michelle.
I would like to note for the record, Commissioner Barnes, you are a VIP. So the rope is open for you.
The velvet, thank you. I apologize. I did have a little trouble.
Yes, we, we all had a little trouble tonight. Okay, so all commissioners are present. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comment?
Um, no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and move to the next item on the agenda, the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar tonight is the approval of minutes from the January 10th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. This was continued from February 28th, 2022 for a correction. Do we have anyone that would like to remove the minutes from the consent calendar? Commissioner Riggs.
I'd like to move approval of the consent item.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Kennedy. Okay, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
DeCarty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Tate.
Abstain.
And I will vote in favor. So the consent calendar is approved on a vote of six in favor with one abstention. Now I'll open the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. The only item under public hearing is F1, a use permit variance by Scott Landry at 628 Cambridge Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to remodel and construct first floor additions to an existing non-conforming one-story residence on a substandard lot. With regard to minimum lot width and area in the R2 low-density apartment zoning district. The proposed work would exceed 50% of the existing replacement value in a 12-month period and requires use permit approval. Additionally, the proposal includes a request for a variance to construct additions within the required right-side setback. We do have a staff report on this. And the staff report is by Ms. Khan. Do we have Ms. Khan here? Do you have any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Good evening Commissioners and members of the public. I do not have any update to the staff report. However, I'd like to note that the neighbor correspondence or support letter was shared earlier this, earlier today, which was shared with the commission. This happened after the publication of the staff report, which is why it's not included as part of the staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, clarifying questions from this time at this time? Don't see any. Do we have a representative from the applicant to make a presentation tonight?
Yes, we do have Aaron Worth from the architects team and we also have the property owner and the Russell and his wife joining us today. So I'll hand it over to Aaron for a quick presentation or, you know, talk about the project a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Aaron Worth with Studio 101 Designs for the designers on the project here over at 628 Cambridge. This is our second project with the Russell Cook family. Good to see you guys over there. As you had mentioned, we're, it's the kind of a twofold thing here. We have a use permit on kind of two grounds there. First one being it's a substandard lot, which kicks us over to you guys regardless. And then we are affecting more than I believe 50% of the structure. So that is another use permit item there. And then there's a variance in regards to the north side of the structure. We're proposing an addition for a bedroom. And the existing house is built up against a driveway that they share with the neighbors at 626. And then the actual like building setback exists somewhere kind of in their living room. So we would be looking for a 50% reduction in that in order to build an addition on the back to provide another bedroom for their kids. Which is the kind of the impetus for this whole thing. They have two children that are approaching their teenage years and believe it was the daughter said she was requesting her own bedroom or she was going to run away. So what we're proposing is two, two bedrooms out of a single one and reworking in like an interior bathroom. And then as part of that, adding on a little work from home space onto the side of the master bedroom. So the, the first addition, the one that would require the variance is going to be enveloped within the gable form of the like existing structure. Require a re-roof through that entire area and then the, the work from home space would be a more modern box shape, which would relate to an old our previous design, which was for the garage in the back, which was a kind of a modern shape, a modern square. Then yeah, it's then all of our, all of our materials are previously used on the site. It's a, it's lap siding or cedar, which the cedar exists in the eaves. And on the, the garage structure and then the rest of it is just a comp shingle to match what is already there. And I think that's about it. Andy and Aaron, if you guys want to take over, but that'd be it for me.
Thank you, Aaron, for, for the synopsis and thank you all for considering. We're really excited to be here and hopefully working with you on this project. Thanks.
We don't want our daughter to run away. It's a tiny house and we're just trying to make the most of it. We love Menlo Park and we love Allied Arts and so just want to add 100 square feet. Please, thank you.
I'm sure we don't want to be responsible for making your daughter run away. Do we have any clarifying questions for the applicants or the architects? Okay, I'd like to open it up to public comment before we bring it back to the commission. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comment this time?
At the moment, I don't see any hands raised. Just as a reminder, if you do wish to give public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine.
Yeah, let's give them a few moments, a few moments anyway.
Still no hands raised.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. I think I'll lead off with the comment that, you know, the variances are sort of a high standard to meet. But I feel that this is a fairly unique case and that it's a, it's a R2 zoned lot with a single family on it. And a family trying to make it work and an unusual lot in a fairly high density neighborhood. A lot of the neighborhood is zoned for R3 and above. So I really hope that, you know, we can find a way to approve this and hopefully not take a lot of time on it. That's my view. Commissioner Kennedy.
Yeah, I echo what Chair Dorn just shared because, you know, one of the great things about this house, I do know the Russells. One of the great things about this house is that it is one of two bungalows that are, that at one point were identical and the creativity with which they invested in a previous remodel is incredible. What they have created out of that very small, what I used to call before they purchased it, I was like, oh, look at those cute shotgun shacks at the corner. And it's really remarkable. And in this neighborhood where there is so little of its original character remaining, those houses are really unique and they speak to a very particular time. It also speaks to the desire for folks to live in a modest amount of space that fits their family's needs. And that is this. And if, if there was ever an opportunity to work with, you know, a variance, this is that time. So I would hope that we could get to a decision of approving this project really rapidly. Because I think this is a good one.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Yes, I echo Chair Dorn's remarks. I just had a quick question, if I may, for staff or the chair. So on this one, more than 50% of the value, therefore they've got to come to us even though they probably, they would have had to anyway because of the substandard lot. I noticed then that the value is based on $200 per square foot. And I, my question to staff is how is this amount determined and how often is it reviewed? Because it seems that it would affect which property owners might have to come to us. And, and how often that might be changed or reviewed?
Yes, good evening Commissioner Harris. So this is a valuation that has been provided to us by the building division. And this is the valuation that we used for all properties that are non-conforming here in the city. I am not aware of the last update that was done, but I could get back to you on that answer. I could defer to Acting Principal Planner Karina to add if she has any additional information on this.
I think that's a good question. I don't believe it's been updated in a while, but one thing to consider is the, the value for the new work hasn't been updated either. So as construction costs go up, it doesn't necessarily I don't think it would mean more use permits because we haven't updated it. That's, that's kind of the question.
So you're saying it affects the numerator and the denominator of that 50%?
Yes, yeah. So since both haven't been updated, maybe that helps a little bit.
Okay. Thank you for that. And if, if somebody could get back to me, that'd be great. Or if you could tell me who I might talk to, that'd be great. Thank you.
And I, I'd like to request staff in the building division, if they have a list of contractors in Menlo Park that can add space for $200 a square foot, I'd like to get that list because I'm going to do a lot of building in my lot. Do we have any other commissioners that'd like to speak on this application? Commissioner DeCarty.
I was going to make a motion, so I'll defer to Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, that was the fastest finger competition there. Commissioner Riggs. You're on mute. You're still on mute, Commissioner Riggs.
I'm sorry. So I'd like to move to approve the project and make the findings for the variance.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure who was first on that, but Commissioner Kennedy's in the upper left. So I'll say Commissioner Kennedy seconded the motion. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Barnes. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I agree with sentiments of my fellow commissioners, yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
I'll vote in favor. So the application as submitted with the findings as submitted is approved with a vote of seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
So with that, I will close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We do have a presentation item on the agenda, item G1. This is to receive a presentation from planning staff on recently approved and currently proposed bayfront projects. And I believe that is in care of Ms. Sandmeyer, is that correct? No, Mr. Prada.
Good evening, it's me. But hang on, my line is a little dark in here. I'm going to turn on some more light. I'll be right back and we'll, we'll get started.
Okay.
That's a little better, but either way, we'll, we'll get the presentation started. So good evening Chair Dorn and members of the commission. So what we have here tonight is a brief presentation to give the commission an update overview of the projects that we have in the bayfront area. Either currently under review on file or recently approved or under construction. So to give a quick update to the commission. So hang on one second, let me get this started. And okay. All right. So like, like I said, this is a presentation, it's an opportunity for the commission to learn more about the projects we currently are reviewing and ask questions. It is a presentation item. So discussion should be limited. Certainly if there are follow-ups that the commission's interested, we can, we can schedule those at another meeting as, as meeting agenda availability allows. But tonight it's more of a presentation from staff, an opportunity for questions, clarifying questions. So by, by way of update here, just wanted to give a overview of the bayfront area zoning map. So, so the, the connect Menlo general plan update was adopted in the end of 2016. It created the new zoning districts of the O Office, RMU residential mixed use. And the life sciences or LS zoning district. And so you'll, you'll see those on the map here in blue, orange, and then a light, light blue for life science over in the kind of right side of the screen. For the, for the purposes of the presentation, we'll consider Willow Road running in a north-south orientation. So when we go through the projects, we'll talk about projects west of Willow Road and then east of Willow Road. So this map also identifies the locations of the Paseos, which are the blue dash lines. And so those will show up throughout the projects that the commission reviews over the, has been reviewing and will continue to review as the projects that we're reviewing and as staff come forward to the planning commission for review and either action or recommendation to the council. And so just a high-level overview of the projects, the, the, this is the map of the bayfront area. It's showing the projects we have on file or have recently finished reviewing. The residential kind of in a brown with mixed use and orange. Blue for office. And then there's a hotel project is labeled as non-residential here in the top left corner at Haven where it bends. And we'll go through all these in detail. And then the life sciences in purple. So projects west of Willow Road. So just a more detailed overview map, what we'll focus on to start is the 111 Independence Drive project, Menlo Portal and 123 Independence. Those are residential or residential mixed use, mainly Menlo Portal that has an office component. And then there's a proposed hotel along Haven Avenue. And I should mention that all of the projects that the city is currently reviewing in the bayfront area are at the bonus level. So what that means is that they are proposed at a higher level of density or intensity and/or height in exchange for community amenities. We won't go into that in detail for all the projects today, but everyone is at the bonus level with the exception of the hotel. The hotel is at a base level project. That's Hotel Moxie shown on the screen here in the, in the left side of the screen. Okay, so 111 Independence Drive. So this project was actually approved by the planning commission in April of 2021. The image here is the rendering of, of the project. And this project is 105 dwelling units, a mix of studios, one-bedroom, the two-bedroom units. It does include 14 below-market rate housing units at varying levels of affordability. So it's a mix of incomes. The community amenities that were approved by the planning commission as far as the proposed project include four additional below-market rate units above the 15% minimum requirement. And the ground floor cafe. And as I mentioned, it was approved in April of 2021. So right next to the 111 Independence Drive project is the Menlo Portal project. This project is a mixed-use project. You're looking here from the northeast at the office building at the corner and then the apartment residential building behind it. And then around the bend is the 111 Independence Drive, which is kind of shown in a, in a grade out rendering there. So this project is 335 dwelling units, about 34,500 square feet of office and an additional 1600 square foot commercial space. The residential component includes 48 below-market rate units, but once again at a mix of affordability levels. This project was approved by the commission in the summer of last year and was the appeal to the council and that appeal was up or was denied. The council upheld the commission's approval of the, of the project. That project included a community amenity, which was a childcare center with an option to pay an in-lug fee. The applicant ultimately elected to pay that in-lug fee prior to starting construction. And this, and this project is under construction at this point. And so for context, Menlo Portal here is shown in pink with the two buildings of the apartment on the, the right side or east and then the office building on the west portion of the site at the corner of Independence and Constitution. This is adjacent to the 111 Independence Drive. And as part of those two projects, the applicants have been working together on some shared access. So while it's not an official Paseo, there is some shared access between this project site and the 111 Independence Drive site to provide a pedestrian bike connection between Independence and Constitution. That's shown in the purple dots between the buildings. And Hotel Moxie, which is a non-bonus level project. This is located at Haven where Haven does its bend off of Marsh and Haven and Bayfront before going north along the, the 101 freeway. And this is a 163-room hotel. It includes a coffee shop on the ground floor open to the public. And on the podium level, there's a bar and a restaurant that would be also open to the public and a publicly accessible outdoor rooftop garden space that, that would be accessible from Haven directly to it without going through the lobby. This one is currently under review. So moving east between well, Chrysler and Independence and Jefferson area, we have 123 Independence, Menlo Uptown and Menlo Flats and then an office project at Commonwealth Building 3162164 Jefferson Drive. Menlo Uptown, this is a project that has a mix of apartments and for-sale townhomes. So you'll see the townhomes on the left of the image. Paseo in the middle, that is an adopted Paseo from the city's connect Menlo general plan update, adopted zoning map. And so that's part of the project. And then the apartment building to the right. In total, there's 483 dwelling units. That includes a mixture of studio to four-bedroom units, the four and the three bedrooms being in the townhome units. There are 73 total below-market rate units on site. And then this project's community amenity, this project has been approved by the planning commission. The community may includes the Ravenswood Family Health Network and Urgent Care Center on this project site. As I mentioned, there's a Paseo from the adopted zoning map that would connect Independence and Constitution Drives. And another context map here for Menlo Uptown shown in the pink buildings and then Paseo in the kind of purple pink connecting Jefferson and Constitution. Nearby, Menlo Flats, this is another project that shares a common property line with Menlo Uptown. This is a single building. It does include 158 dwelling units, including studios and four bedrooms. No one or two bedrooms or three bedrooms. It does have a mix of smaller studio apartments and larger four-bedroom units. About 13,400 square feet of office and 1600 square feet of commercial use. The commercial will be on the ground floor for a total of 15,000 square feet of commercial uses. There would be 21 below-market rate units. Once again, at various levels of affordability. This project status, we intend to release the filing IR this Wednesday. And it will go to the planning commission for your review on the 28th of March. The community may has proposed as the payment of the in-lug fee. And this project includes a portion of a Paseo. And so if I go back to the last image, it is kind of on the right side of the building or the east-facing side of the building. It's a portion of the Paseo that's shared between four properties in the area. So this would be the first stage of that Paseo. And just another map for context here for Menlo Flats. Commonwealth Building 3, this is an office project just shy of 250,000 square feet is the third building on the Commonwealth Corporate Center. We commonly refer to as Commonwealth Building 3. It's at 162 Jefferson Drive. And see the total campus with this building and the existing two buildings would be a little over, it'd be 510,000 roughly square feet of office space. It does include some publicly accessible open space through the Paseos that were adopted as part of the general plan update along the southern edge of the project. And it's currently under review by staff. We are, we're in the process of developing the draft IR for this project. as part of the general plan update along the southern edge of the project, and it's currently under review by staff. We are, we're in the process of developing the draft IR for this project. 123 Independence, so going back to a residential project. This is a mix of apartments and townhomes. There are 316 apartment buildings. Those are studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and 116 for-sale townhomes. There are 48 apartment BMR units and 18 for-sale townhomes that are BMR currently proposed to be provided in a mix of income levels. This, this project does also include a Paseo from an adopted zoning map, and I'll get to a site plan in a second, that, that can connect between Independence and Constitution. And so that Paseo does run through the, the middle of the project site, and this project is currently under review. And here's a picture of the apartment building. And then the site plan, the Paseo is still left of the apartment building, cutting from Constitution to Independence, and does include a larger kind of publicly accessible park, open space in the, in the middle of the townhomes. And the townhomes are generally located along Independence and Chrysler. And so moving to the project east of Willow Road. We'll, we'll focus first on the life science projects along O'Brien. So 1005 O'Brien Drive, also 13, referred to as 1320 Willow Road. That, that project is, is one of the newest submittals that we have, along with the 1030 O'Brien Drive project on the south side of O'Brien. And so one thing to note here, I did mention earlier that every project was a, a bonus level, probably except the hotel. I was mistaken and now realizing that I was incorrect there. 1030 O'Brien Drive was recently submitted, and that's a base level project. The south side of O'Brien, those, those are all base-level zoning. There, there's no bonus level available on those life science properties. And so with that, we'll move to talk through these four projects, including CS Bio and 1125 O'Brien Drive, or two life science buildings adjacent to each other. So 1005 O'Brien Drive, here are some renderings for the commission's benefit. And just a brief overview of the project, it's about 230,000 square feet of R&amp;D space between two life science buildings. Does include a parking structure, and it's intended to be constructed in multiple phases, or at least two phases due to the existing conditions of the site and existing uses. And as we, as I mentioned a minute ago, it's one of the newer projects, so it's currently under review. And here's a site plan, since it has multiple buildings, just to give context, does include amenities building adjacent to the garage. CS Bio Phase 3. So here are some renderings. And this is an approximately 100,000-square-foot new building located at the corner of Kelly Court and O'Brien Drive. So I'll go back one slide. It's a taller building that you see here. The low-rise building is existing 20 Kelly Court building that would remain. And then the new parking structures where a portion of the existing low-rise building would be demolished, and then that's the existing single-story warehouse building. So as I just mentioned, a portion of 20 Kelly Court will remain. The 100,000-square-foot R&amp;D office building would also include a 10,000-square-foot ground floor restaurant space at, at the corner of, of Kelly Court and O'Brien Drive. As I mentioned, the existing building at 20 Kelly Court would remain a portion of it. And the status, this project is under review. We're currently in the environmental review phase. And so for context here, this, this is a multi, multiple-building project site showing the layout. The 105 O'Brien Drive building on the map here is the, the new building with 20 Kelly Court to remain, and the parking garage also proposed. Adjacent to the CS Bio project is 1125 O'Brien Drive. And this is a proposed 132,000 approximately square-foot life science building. It does include a ground floor commercial space. The development also includes the parcel 1 Casey Court currently proposed to be used for surface-level parking. And this project is also under review. We're, we're currently in the environmental review phase. So then, north of the Hetch Hetchy right away are, are two projects adjacent to each other, the Willow Village project, which is a mixed-use master plan that's shown here in orange for the context, and then 1350 Adams Court is a proposed life science building. And so here's an image of Willow Village's proposed Main Street. The commission received a presentation for Willow Village back in January, so I won't go into too much detail here, but it is approximately up to 1,730 dwelling units, 1.6 million square feet of office and accessory space. And so that does include a, a maximum of 1.25 million square feet of office, and then up to 350,000 square feet of the accessory spaces, which, which could be the meeting and collaboration space, and other kind of support uses, conference center space, things like that for use by the private sponsor Meta. The project would include up to 200,000 square feet of retail, non-office commercial that, that does currently include a proposed grocery store, pharmacy, and other entertainment and restaurant uses. There'll also be a 193-room hotel on the project site. A few more things to note for the project. Bike and pet access for this project would include an elevated park across Willow Road, and a proposed tunnel below Willow Road that would connect the project site with the Meadow West Campus, which also links to the undercrossing under Bayfront Expressway to the East Campus and the Bay Trail. There would also be a bike-ped path or Paseo from the adopted zoning map between the Adams Court project and the Willow Village project sites. That's currently proposed to be completely on the Willow Village project site, but, but would meet the intent of that bike-ped connection north-south between O'Brien Drive and, and the Dumbarton corridor. The project does include publicly accessible open space. And so just to highlight a few of them here, there would be a 3.5-acre publicly accessible park, a dog park, a town square, and then, like I mentioned, the elevated park. And what's important to know is the off-site improvements, it does include the Hamilton Avenue parcels, which there would be the proposed realignment of Hamilton Avenue to create a new intersection on Willow Road with some better designed angles for line of sight and access. And that would allow for the potential expansion of retail uses on Hamilton Avenue parcel north, and the reconstruction of the Chevron service station on, on the south parcel. And then here's a rendering of the publicly accessible park. The programming has not been determined at this time, but this is, this is one concept for it, is a passive park. And then adjacent to this project, the Willow Village project, excuse me, is the 1350 Adams Court project. This is a 260,000-square-foot proposed life science building. It's located on the undeveloped northern portion of the 1350 or 1305 O'Brien Drive parcel. So there's an existing life science building that would remain on the project site. And then this new project would be built on the undeveloped current northern portion. It's under review. We're currently in the environmental review stage and intend to, or plan to release in the EIR draft IR, excuse me, in the near future. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, I have one clarifying question. There are two hotels in that presentation, one, the Moxie on Haven Road, and the other in Willow Village. I understand that the zoning doesn't permit two hotels in this district. Is that correct? Only one of them could actually be built?
Both hotels could be built. The, the general plan update studied up to 400 hotel rooms in the Bayfront area. With the proposed hotel on the Willow Village project site and Hotel Moxie, we're just shy of the total hotel room cap at about 396 units or so. I have to look that up for you, but the hotels, currently, the number of rooms are within the development potential that we studied in the EIR and identified in the general plan update. Both hotels do need use permits. They're not in parcels that were designated as hotels being permitted by right. Or they would still need architectural control, so I want to be careful how I say that, but without a use permit, that discretionary action. Both of these hotels do need that discretionary review. The Hotel Moxie is requesting a use permit. The proposed Willow Village project includes a conditional development permit, which, which encompasses things like that you would see in a use permit or an architectural control application.
So the 400-room limit doesn't count the 240 rooms for the Sizemore Hotel?
It counts the 40 rooms that were added as part of this conditional development permit amendment versus an M, and then I apologize, I should have explained that as well. So those 40 rooms are part of the 400-room cap. The 200 rooms were, that were permitted for the original conditional development permit for the campus expansion project, or the Meadow West Campus, buildings 21, 22, and the hotel. Those were the, prior to the general plan update.
Okay, so 40 rooms are included in the 400-room, room count. So the currently proposed hotels, together with the 40 rooms that we just approved for Sizemore, actually, I'm not sure those were approved. That was continued. But the 40 rooms requested for Sizemore, we put the room count above the 400-room limit. Is that correct?
You, you, you got me scared for a second, but I just did some math here. 100, Brett, 396.
Counting the 40 rooms.
Counting the 40 rooms. Okay. Yeah, I was about to second-guess my math.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
I apologize. I may have missed it. I didn't hear the description for 1030 O'Brien.
Good, that, yes, because we, we just got that, and I haven't had a chance to summarize it. If you'll give me a minute, I can pull up the information, and I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Riggs.
Or, or just roughly, I don't know whether it's a 50,000-square-foot project or 100,000 square foot, that kind of thing.
Yeah, look, if you'll give me a minute, I can look it up real quick, and, and, and I'll follow up after answering some more questions.
And, and a brief version is fine, but thank you.
What else? Commissioner DeCarty.
Commissioner Tate had her hand raised.
It's my curtain again, right? So I, I'm just wondering, I know in the earlier stages of, you know, getting feedback from the community and what have you for Willow Village, there was a lot of talk about, you know, which I'm happy they're not doing now, a flyover and, and roads going all over the place for the buses and what have you. But I do think that it is worth looking at, putting a road in from the Life Sciences Willow Village area that goes directly out to Bayfront. And I'm not really sure who to petition for that, because it, it definitely is something that should be reviewed at this stage. And I know Charlton is opening up some streets from East Palo Alto to get over into his area to make it a, the Life Sciences area, to make it a smooth access for people to get out into that area. And again, it would be great. It would relieve so much pressure off of not only Willow Road, but also our neighbors and university if there was a road that just went straight. So Kyle, how do we go about trying to make sure that that is a conversation someplace?
So this is a presentation, so I, I, I want to answer your question, but I got to be careful not to have a dialogue that is something that's not on the agenda. Certainly, as part of the Willow Village project, as with all these projects, we'll be bringing those back to the Planning Commission for study sessions, for public hearings, for their environmental review. So Willow Village will have a draft IR, public hearing, and a study session at the commission in the near future. Those types of comments and questions may or may not be appropriate for the environmental review, but may also may be appropriate for the study session component. And I just want to stress for all the projects that there will be, with the ones that haven't been approved yet by the Planning Commission or Council, you know, that there will be opportunities to review through a public hearing and/or a study session, or both. The entitlements, the environmental review, and the general design of the project.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I appreciate the question from Commissioner Tate, and I think it dovetails with the question that I have. As we look at individual projects, and as you look at individual projects, on one level, we had a plan, I think, that was supposed to be in place for development over decades. And that development is being condensed, which is an incredible amount of pressure on a community, but it's also a great opportunity, I think, to make sure that those, that the development works in concert on behalf of the whole community. And certainly, part of the plan in place, as the projects on the other side of Willow you described have Paseos, and developers have to pay attention to those Paseos. And you just gave a good example, I think, of two developers working together informally to try to make something work. On the projects on this side of Willow, that we're just talking about, the ones you just reviewed, I'm curious how you as staff, and as how we as a planning commission are supposed to look at those intersections when we are only looking at one project. So Commissioner Tate's question is a great one. That may or may not be relevant to the Willow Village discussion. It may actually be tangential to every project, could yet potentially across all of them be material. And it's my experience from looking at the recent ones around Willow Village and Life Sciences, that each one of those presentations does a great job talking about the project, and then has sort of arrows that go off into mist about how it's going to be connecting for the community. But it makes it very difficult as a planning commissioner to know how the site is being used most effectively, where the open space is, how to think about access without understanding that connectivity. And so I want to, my question to you is how do you as planning staff look at that connectivity? And how can we as a planning commission understand that connectivity, so we can actually appropriately review these individual projects?
So, so great, great comments, and appreciate the sentiments. Certainly, to answer your question, I think I can answer here. The staff, we, we do look at the, the projects in the context of their neighboring proposed projects, and how they, they do interact, interplay there. We certainly look at our plan and, and look at the design requirements, and how we can work, then the confines of the plan, to, to work with an applicant to try to improve or enhance some connectivity. So we certainly do that as part of our plan review with any project, and especially when we have a lot of projects together. So your, your comments, well taken. We, we certainly do look at that. In, in terms of the second part, I want to be careful to answer clarifying questions and, and not try to have too much of a dialogue. But certainly, I think your points, well taken. I, I think a lot of it could be provided in the staff report for the commission to better understand the connectivity. So I think that might be where you're going with that. I don't want to be careful. I don't want to try to assume something, but I think it sounds like a lot of it would be how information is provided to the commission in those reports to understand that context. Which, which we can, we can take that feedback here and, and work on.
Yeah, I think that's a fair summary of my question, and ultimately I appreciate you explaining how planning does it. It's not my experience that we see it in that way, and so I think that would, that, that would be helpful in that way. I'll pause. I have a couple others and different kinds of. But I'll pause to see if other commissioners would like to.
Through the chair, if, if I could respond to Commissioner Riggs's question for 1030 O'Brien, real quickly. So, so it's a, I do have that information. It, the proposed project, it would be in multiple buildings, would be approximately 86,000 square feet of R&amp;D space. That's at the maximum of 55% FBR for life sciences R&amp;D in the life sciences zoning. There's a small commercial component, a couple thousand square feet, and those, that is permitted to go above the 55% by 10% in non-office, non-life science kind of support commercial uses.
Thank you, Mr. Brother.
Commissioner Harris.
Thank you. I have some similar questions about how we look at this area in its entirety. I like, I appreciate the presentation, and I like how you have shown us in those sort of purple-pink dashed lines where the different Paseos are. It's hard for me when it's on each one of those pages to look at them on its whole, and I wonder, is there It's hard for me when it's on each one of those pages to look at them on its whole. And I wonder, is there a way that we could see, you know, all of it? And I could take a look at, oh, I I we could all see how the Paseos and the bike paths, all those work together and how we can, how if if people are living or working over there, how those all connect and where maybe are the missing pieces? So I'm wondering if those could all be put on one kind of map for us and and then maybe to Commissioner DeCarty's point, that that sort of overall map could be brought back to us as we look at individual projects. So we can understand, you know, what we're looking at, where the gaps are and how we can get from one place to another. And then that opens up. You know, per Commissioner Tate's thinking of how how we can get how how we can, how we can move people around. That's my first. Well, actually, what could you, maybe you could comment on that? I have one more thing.
I think we we can certainly look into that. It's a point well taken. I I think we understand the the context and the benefit of having a map that shows that interrelationship between projects. We can certainly look into that. This presentation was definitely meant to be an opportunity to learn more about each project and and see the development that's being proposed. And certainly, the the scope of it wasn't to go into that level of detail for the interconnectivity between the projects, but we can certainly look at, you know, a a map or or some some sort of available, you know, imagery on our website for that that we can share with the commission as well.
Yeah, I I think I must have had a misunderstanding. I I thought this was going to be kind of an overall view of where we are in this as we move forward in in this area. So that would be terrific if we could add that for our so for our edification and and understanding. My other question is, as as I look at this, I think this was supposed to be about a twenty year development and I know that this is all happening much faster than than it was anticipated when this was put together. And so that makes me think about what, if we think about the EIR that was put together for this, the program EIR, I wonder how some of those determinations that were in the EIR might be different had we put together that EIR assuming a much shorter timeframe, like six to ten years. I guess we don't really go back to EIRs, but I'm just wondering what aspects might have changed and what mitigations would we have been looking for in this case? And is there, do we ever go back and can we go back to think through about what what other mitigations we might want to wait make, given how quickly this development is happening in that area? Especially as it is completely surrounding the Bell Haven neighborhood.
Yeah, so it's a good question. Let me try to answer it for informational purposes here without veering off of the agenda item. These are all very good questions. I appreciate them from from the commissioners, but we got to be mindful of of the agendized item as a presentation, but it and so I say that just to to set the expectation that this could be a brief discussion here and we we may need to schedule a different discussion later on 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 that topic. What I will say is that all of the projects that are at the bonus level are we are preparing, staff are preparing an environmental impact report for each project. That that EIR will look at each project's potential impacts. It also does look at the cumulative impacts with the project and it does identify, even if the the timeline changes, it does look at cumulative development potential of the of the current project, the projects in the Bayfront area within Connect Menlo and and does take that into account in terms of the overall growth and the cumulative growth. If that helps. So there's project specific analyses that that will build off of Connect Menlo and may or may not identify the same or additional mitigation measures as needed based on the development. So so if that that kind of helps understand the the that each project that's not at a base level is required to do an EIR and and we will be looking at project specific mitigations, which may or may not be the same as as Connect Menlo.
Right, but that's not taking into account the speed at which the overall plan is happening, correct?
It it does look at that for certain topic areas in terms of whether or not the build out horizon year potentially changing or some components of it changing affect the analysis. It does, it does look at that to a certain extent.
Okay, I'll I'll let somebody else ask questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We had a hand raised, but we no longer do. Was that Commissioner Kennedy? Did you have your hand raised?
It was mine and it it it's more around sort of some of the conversation that has already happened. So I didn't want to just listen to hear myself talk. But, you know, back back in the day, so it must be six or seven, seven years ago now, you know, Meta prepared a an enormous massing model of all of the projects they hope to do. And I think it also included a rendition of Willow Village. And I'm wondering, and you know, the accountability that they have always presented is is, I think, has always been very useful and very helpful. And I'm wondering if when you weave together all of these sites, because I'm one dimensional, I'm not a one dimensional person. Maps are, you know, I I appreciate maps, but I like to see things in three D three D. And I'm wondering if we took all of these various projects together, it would make it would make it easier for folks to understand what goes where and how it all operates. And more importantly, what connections are missing? And so I'm wondering, and it's not to be answered here, but I'm wondering how how do we as a community and as a commission look at everything in real space, right? Something like that could be built. I don't know on whose dime. But I think it would be really useful specifically around what Commissioner Tate has requested, sort of, you know, a a new connection to to Bayfront Expressway to alleviate some of the traffic through the neighborhoods. And perhaps where else there might be, you know, in 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 theory, on maps, things look a certain way. In reality, in massing models, they operate very differently. And so that's just my my question.
We will certainly look into how we can better relay the totality of the proposed projects in the Bayfront area. Really, really appreciate the the comment and perhaps we can do something with the images from the applicants' models and put it into it. We we are limited with resources, but but we will certainly see what we can do. I I think I understand the desire from the commission or from individual commissioners. I have a feeling it it it, we've been hearing it about putting something together that does show the the Bayfront area that that maybe is more than just a map of each project in its own little silo. I think I think we get the the sentiment.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, two things. The first one, I want to pick up on the thread of the conversation about the distinction between the program EIR for this region, then individual project EIRs, just to see if I understood your your answer. So I I I believe we have a program EIR. And then on the individual EIRs, they do look at what has happened in some ways in the intervening time. So we get that, I mean, that there's unique things to that project to take a look at. They're essentially not covered by the program EIR. But I guess I'm just still a little bit confused. You said there was something else in there that in it that a project EIR actually also looks at something about the cumulative development that has happened since the program EIR. And if you could explain that just a little bit more.
Yeah, so 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 the the project level EIR will analyze projects impacts on on the environment. And it will, it will also look at a cumulative analysis, which is complete build out of of the city in a in a future year. And what it, what we have done is where and and I'm, I can't off the top of my head, explain exactly where and when, but if development has occurred at a different pace, we have referenced whether that has affected that analysis or not in the EIRs. And so we we certainly can try to explain that, but but for a lot of them, the project level analysis is the analysis and it's not, it's not cumulative in the same way. I think the the historic cumulative analysis is traffic when it comes to like building upon each project, although traffic is not and level of service type of traffic is not a sequel impact anymore. So we got to be careful about how we talk about that. It's it's now vehicle miles traveled as the metric. And that is, that is not an additive. That's a efficiency metric per employee, per resident. It doesn't change with the cumulative projects. It could potentially go down in the cumulative when you have more complementary land uses, but in you look at it, you look at it as the projects, VMT. I'm getting off topic. Sorry. The the point is that we look at the project, we look at the cumulative and we do identify if there's anything that's changed in between the project and the cumulative from Connect Menlo that would affect that cumulative analysis. So are there new projects in the area that haven't been incorporated into the program level EIR that would affect that analysis? And we also have looked at whether or not the pace would have affected any of the outcomes of the impacts, if that makes sense.
Does. I guess it'd be my follow up question goes the other direction, which is, but you had a program EIR that was put in place before any of this happened, but has a whole level of assumptions. You now have a reality of what has happened since then. When do you go back and relook at that program EIR? And your VMT example is beautiful because you actually have a reality now that is different than whatever the projections were based on VMT in twenty fifteen, which is on models that were from twenty ten. When do you go back and look at the program EIR around those things?
So let 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 me try to answer. And I want to be mindful of the questions about projects versus the questions about, you know, methodology and sequel, which is, which is obviously not on the agenda here. But we we we, what you do is you look at the project analysis in each EIR and you refer back to Connect Menlo, but things could have changed and you would, the project analysis would be the the analysis on the ground today and it would look at some updated conditions where appropriate. So model years in terms of like baseline traffic, I know traffic is not the a sequel thing, but it's easy to talk about. We have updated our trips, right? Trip trip counts from Connect Menlo aren't being used in the project level EIRs for the non-sequel level now. So things like, that's an easy one to try to explain here. It it's obviously not a sequel thing anymore, but it it's probably a better metric because it's easy to think about traffic and level of service and so we have updated models for for background conditions like existing traffic conditions in the area that we use in the project level analysis. So so there are updates that happen between the program level and the project level, but certainly for areas that are still applicable from Connect Menlo, those carried forward. And you tear off of those analyses and and then you update as needed for the project level analysis with any project level metrics or conditions as appropriate.
I I appreciate the answer. It feels kind of relevant. We're talking about all these projects, these these projects as an EIR, but but fair enough.
I I just want to be careful of of the agendized topic and and not run afoul of of talking about and having a discussion versus a question and answer type of thing. So that's why I want to be careful.
That's fine. I was, they were, for my mind, clarifying questions. I appreciate it. Thank you for the time on this. My other question is, if you could clarify or remind at least me, how do we look at Hatch Etchy and that Hatch Etchy right of way? And I say that because in recent discussions we've had about projects, there's been references about where the public use space is going to be in a project, where the cut-throughs are going to be in the project with some nodding to Hatch Etchy and the opportunity set for utilizing that for being able to get through or get access. And yet there's a current use of Hatch Etchy, certainly Mid Peninsula High School, which is a closed campus, has a parking lot that is over Hatch Etchy. So I say that as an example, not to answer that question, but just to understand how are we supposed to, as planning commissioners, make sense of what we're told about the potential utilization of Hatch Etchy? Because we haven't had that discussion in this context. So how should we think about that?
So I think to start from a staff level, we're we're, we certainly are exploring all opportunities to utilize that right away, obviously with the you know, approval of the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. So we we are, we are looking at how that area could be utilized for, you know, additional bike ped connections. We are, we are talking to applicants about it. Ultimately, it does rest on whether or not the SFPUC would approve any access or encroachments, but it's certainly something that that staff has been looking at as an opportunity and and how potentially that right away that that does have a use below ground in in terms of the 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 high pressure Hatch Etchy right away pipelines. But does have this potential for maybe some hacked grade access that we'd like to look into. So we we certainly look into that. And we do flag it, you know, on a lot of study sessions that the commission has seen as as questions for discussion on whether or not that should be continued to be explored by applicants and staff.
I appreciate that. There are other hands. I'll just say that I think it would be helpful sometimes in our discussions to actually have planning commission staff be able to say whether something we are being told by an applicant is actually completely doable or conjecture or what the steps would be, especially in that kind of context. Because I think we end up in back and forth, having a discussion where you all have expertise that in those moments would be good to bring to bear. So I appreciate the answer. And I guess to that point that you're all looking at it, I don't know that necessarily we get that insight in real time in that way. So, but thank you for the answer.
Mr. Kennedy.
So something else about the the Hatch Etchy right of way. It's interesting to me because you know, that spine is really complex and in a lot of cases I've seen it developed in a very low low pressure kind of way with, because you can't put anything permanent and you can't feel, put anything underground. For example, there are a couple of playgrounds that have been built on those sites. The the issue too becomes that it's it's not twenty-four hour access, right? So it's dawn to dusk access or 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 something. So it would be interesting to see how those, how the Hatch Etchy right of way could be deployed in an impermanent way to create some type of ribbon throughout the various sites. And but but it Kyle, you mentioned it, that it really depends on what SFPUC deems appropriate. That's all.
Mr. Barnes.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Doran, and thank you, Mr. Prada, for your presentation this evening. I mean, it's it's just so informative to get the breadth of the projects and get a look at them and what's going on. Well, we have the opportunity to get that deck that you presented tonight. I didn't see it in tonight's agenda as a PDF. Is that something we can potentially access?
Yeah, I I finished it at seven fifteen, so I'll, we'll, we'll, we'll add it to the minutes and 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 send it over. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that the commission and the public has access to it, which brings me to a point of order. Chair Doran, it's your prerogative, but this item could certainly have public comment if you wanted to call for it. It's up to the chair. I just want to make sure that I stress that I didn't do that with my presentation in the beginning.
Yeah, that's that's a good. Yeah, that's that's a good point. Commissioner Barnes, do you have any other questions? Maybe we'll finish up with you and then open public comment.
Why don't we do this? Why don't I yield the floor to public comments? I do have a couple comments. And so if you want to do public comment, you can come back to me, and then I'm happy to finish up.
Okay, I will open meeting up to public comment. Mr. Turner, can you look and see if we have any hands raised from the public? Speak about this.
We do have a hand raised. Let me get zoom ready here. We do have Pam Jones. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name and address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation. If you have multiple speakers on the same count, please let us know at the beginning of your comment, and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. It's Jones. You should be able to mute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners, and I cannot tell you how grateful I am that we're finally having this information and this discussion. My name is Pamela Jones. I'm a longtime resident of District One, and I'm not affiliated with anybody other than myself. This this discussion is critical to how we're going to move forward. All of the information that you're asking for this evening, particularly with traffic, was asked even before the general plan was passed. All of the development and the zoning was decided so that the developers would be able to do exactly what they're doing today. So none of this part is a mystery. And and it was said there needed to be one EIR that included every single project, including traffic. And we also talked about environmental justice, but remember, this was in 2016. And so environmental justice didn't come to the forefront SB 1000 until the following year, you know, very surprising there. I I too, I desperately want to see one one place where there's a three dimensional picture of what the entire District One is going to look like with everything that we have. I'm certain there are models that that can be bought, that you put, put the information in, and the model is created intentionally. We have schools in the area that do planning. I think San Francisco State has or San Jose State has a planning department degree program, and we could go to them and and ask them to do it, because I do understand that the staff is has more than enough with what they're doing. The other thing that I want to say is that there are pieces of this discussion tonight that I had put in writing in a number of the EIRs so that there would be documentation that these concerns were brought up even before the shovels were in the ground. And the last thing that I want to say is that each one of you needs to drive through that Bayfront area and look at the Gray Star projects that are now being done. And then imagine what it's going to be like when the rest of the projects are completed and that every unit has a person in it, and they're going to be trying to get somewhere, and they can only do it by car, bicycle, or if it's close enough. But otherwise, by car, because there's no transportation. So we really need to look at the whole picture, and I'm just really grateful that as a commission is more than willing to have this information. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do we have any other hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised at this time. Just as a reminder, if you do wish to give public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in and want to give public comment, click star nine on your phone.
No other hands?
None at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Barnes was speaking when we broke for public comment. Did you have further remarks, Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for, thank you for asking and and coming back. So I've got two amplifications and one confirmation. Amplification number one is to Commissioner DeCarty's statement about the staff and the resource we have in staff and and how we benefit when they have when they give when, when in the context where they can weigh in on applicants as X, staff sees Y, and staff has an opinion on the feasibility of Y, and we all benefit from that. And I think we kind of went through that exercise with the sign ordinance exercise that we went through and, you know, planning commission looking to staff to provide some of their expertise on this. And certainly, there's opportunities as we walk through continued approvals in this area. The other amplification is, I did hear you say, Mr. Prada, that updated models are used in the project level analysis. And that's good to hear, and I'm glad to hear that. The third one I have is a confirmation, and I I've heard a number of times the the suggestion that there's been a acceleration of development in the through the the general plan, the Connect Menlo. And certainly in my experience, when this when Connect Menlo was put together, there was not an anticipation of a staging of development. There was a horizon which was established to look at a build out timeframe. And then within that timeframe, there certainly was not a staging, per se, or a there was not a suggestion that there would be a cadence for development. And I think everyone and way that it's set up, Connect Menlo is that it's a first come, first served. In many respects, it's first come, first served when it comes to residential units, it's first come, first served when it comes to hotel units, go gross square footage when it comes to commercial. So I don't think that the issue is that there's a clustering now because that was already anticipated, and it's not related to the 2040 number. 2040 number is just the horizon. Now, how that gets worked in is something we have to deal with, but the process hasn't been turned on its head. The process was was set up in such a way you had a horizon, then you had developments coming in. Now, our job is to figure out, you know, to the extent that these are coming in concurrently, you know, how does that look and how's it going to work together? But my point is that this is not, the process is not as, is not unintended process, but it's a process that nonetheless we need to pay attention to as these cluster and these developments go forward. So those are my three points. And thank you again for spending time with us this evening and enhancing our dialogue as it relates to comprehensive view of this area and how to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Do we have other commissioners that would wish to speak now? I'm not seeing any. Okay, I think I'll close the presentation item. Thank you very much, Mr. Prada. That was really helpful. And I'm sure involved not insignificant amount of time on your part. I just want to second the request to get the report. I'd like to see that myself. So I'll move to informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have informational items for us?
Yes, so our next meeting is in two weeks, March 28th, and we have a number of items. We have a two unit development on Bay Road. We have the Menlo Flats project for the final environmental impact report and the entitlements. And we also have a study session on the Parkline project, which is a proposal to redevelop the SRI campus. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Real questions from Ms. Sandmeyer. Mr. Barnes.
I have no question. I do have a thank you. Thank you for when doing the agenda for breaking those into PDF packets. I personally found that super helpful. I know that we'd asked for that a couple of times, and I wasn't expecting it, but it was done, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Glad that was helpful.
Commissioner DeCarty.
I have a quick question, but before that, I'll just say I want to thank staff and Mr. Prada for the effort and energy to have this session tonight. I know that's above and beyond the work you all have, but extraordinarily helpful in the background material. So thank you. My question is any update on when we would would move to a different way of meeting if there's any further information given changes that are happening with public health guidance around the pandemic, or if that is still to be determined?
I think it's still to be determined. I will definitely keep the commission up to date if there's any changes.
Okay, I think that's all from the commission. So thank you very much, Ms. Sandmeyer. And I will adjourn tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Doran. You're welcome, everybody.